Nursery Field Presentation.
All right. I'm going to give a very short intro and then let the team step in to save me. At the January 10th meeting, the council voted to direct the manager's office to suspend all activity related to the proposed project. This included the contract execution to advance the construction documents, the expenditure of monies previously allocated for those documents, and the execution of the donor agreement. Subsequent to that resolution, you further requested that staff organize a presentation consistent with the intent to bringing the new council members up to speed on the project. Over the last six weeks, we've received numerous questions from this body, as well as requests to re-present or clarify certain aspects. We've also met with some of you informally. Tonight's presentation is centered around those questions, comments, and requests. It's not meant to reach beyond the volume of materials already provided, but rather to provide, rather to focus on certain aspects of the review and the previous work. In large part, the focus is on the history of Nursery Field, the RYREC facility use in total, and the demand on the city's inventory of fields. The presentation tonight will be led by Christian, Aaron, and Ryan, but there's also been a great deal of work behind the scenes invested in tonight's presentation by them, as well as Brian and Kristen. As a final reminder, and as noted in the published agenda, tonight's presentation and Q and A is limited to the council. There will be no comments or questions from the public this evening. However, comments are being posted at the city's website, and there will be time at future meetings dedicated to public comment. All the presentations, materials that you have and will be presented tonight have been posted on the website or on the first page in the scroll.
Good evening. For those that don't know me, I'm Christian Miller, the city planner. I've been here since December of 2000, which is why I got selected to do the background and history. Even though I've been here this long, I can't say that I remember everything. So what I did is I relied upon the resources that are already available largely on the city website to refresh my memory, which is notoriously poor, but to walk you through a history very briefly. I think the first time we start to see background and information related to Nursery Field is the 1985 Master Plan. It had a whole chapter on recreation, and you're starting to see these growing recreational needs. And it specifically identifies Rich's Nursery, which is the current Nursery Field property. For those that don't know, it was a commercial nursery owned by the Rich family, and it was designated for acquisition for a park. Interestingly, somewhat as an aside, the former landfill at Disborough Park was also designated to be a field. That is now Sterling Field, as some of you may know. And in fact, in '93 or '94, we're not exactly sure the exact date, Sterling Field was actually converted from this former landfill to a field. That field was funded by a donation or contribution, rather, from the Osborne Home. As we move forward, in the year 2000, the city completed largely at the Recreation Commission's direction, I was not here for this, but the completion of the Recreation Master Plan. And there again, they identified a broad spectrum of recreational needs, not just targeting, you know, youth sports, but also seniors and others, and not just fields, but say the Damiano Center and other kinds of facilities. Has a lot of information, has a lot of recommendations, but there were three priority recommendations from that report, and the reason the study is relevant is because it went towards the Recreation Bond in 2002. And those three identified priorities were acquisition of property for athletic fields, the implementation of a trailway, and the expansion of the Damiano Center. So if you go back in time and you see the Recreation Bond, it is often sometimes referred to as the Recreation Master Plan Bond, or something similar to that. So then, that should be 2002, not 2022, but it was a heck of a year. In January, the city, actually, the deed was filed, but the Nursery Field property was purchased in November of 2001. In January and February, a special fields committee, and I want to get it right, Special Athletic Field/Wetlands Committee was formed, and it completed its advisory review and recommendations for the use of Nursery Field. That's how it became a rectangular field. All of those minutes of those meetings, they were fairly intense. I think there was five in a two-month period. They're all posted online. They've been up there for a long time. So that's how it became a rectangular field at that location. It also included a wetland restoration, or setting aside areas that would not be used for Recreation Field, and that was the purpose of this committee, to balance out these two interests at that time. In March, the $7 million Recreation Bond failed in a special election. In June, they held another special election. They modified the bond. What did they get rid of? Well, they pared down the scope of the Rec-Damiano Center expansion, brought the price down, and they eliminated the trailway. And because of that, reducing the price, and particularly, I think, the trailway was a concern, the bond did pass. In July, the city council adopted a resolution waiving the review requirements by city advisory boards and commissions for the field construction. The Planning Commission, just as it did in 2023, did provide an advisory view on the LWRP. That couldn't be waived because that is cited in the code. 20 years ago it was, as it is today. In October of that same year, the city council declared a negative declaration, LWRP coastal consistency. All of this was to implement the implementation of the field that is there today. And in November of that same year, the city council awarded a bid for the athletic field construction.
How much was it?
I don't know, because there were a lot of components at that time. There was the demolition of the commercial buildings that were there. There was the asbestos abatement. There was another piece of that, which was Founder's Field. City didn't build one field in 2023. They built two, or three, depending how you look at it.
2003.
2003. They built Nursery Field, but also Founder's Field. Those are the two baseball fields that you see at Disborough Park immediately adjacent to Oakland Beach Avenue. That was, those were woods and rocks.
That was from the bond money, because they did the bond, and so they built the...
But all of that happened in 11 months, not four or five years.
Well, I mean, not to build it. It ended somewhere in 2023, 2003. But again, yes, yes, that, yes. So how was this paid for? There was three basic elements. Again, the Recreation Bond was a source of funds. There was also a bond or a loan, depending on how you look at it, approximately $1.7 million from the Environmental Facilities Corporation. That bond amount was later modified down to about a million. We've talked about this, but the history of that is that EFC decided at some point that the field portion could not be used towards the EFC grant. So I don't know how much back and forth there was. It says that's not right, or maybe it is. The bond amount was modified, so it only applies to the non-field portion of the property. There was also, in December, it was announced, December of 2002, a grant for $1.6 million from the DEC, and that was for a wetland restoration. That grant was never formally accepted by the city council.
Wetlands at Nursery Field?
Correct. The program, as you'll see in some of the minutes from the Special Fields Committee, is to actually expand that wetland quite significantly, and you'd be, it's a fairly significant excavation project to turn this small pocket wetland into a larger wetland on the property. The grant was never accepted.
I watched it, Christian. I just wanted to ask real quickly. So it was because we didn't really want to encourage all that water into that area? I mean, I just kind of want to use lay language here, so I understand.
Well, I would say there was concerns about the grant, we'll call them hooks, that there was a pretty extensive monitoring period that I think some were concerned about, that if it failed to perform as expected, again, this is nature. This isn't like building a building, or something, you know. There was concern about that. I don't know if there was concern about, you know, water being in close proximity to people's homes. Knowing what I know now, I know for sure there would be concerns about water in close proximity. It was essentially taking Long Island Sound up through Milton Cemetery, under Milton Road, and having it come in and out of the site as a tidal wetland. So turning it into this isolated pocket wetland into an interconnected tidal wetland, low mud flat periods, higher tide periods. So it was a, it was a very, it was actually a fascinating project, but there was a lot of concern, I think, about some of the implementation and the grant requirements. So we're done. Built three fields in two years, however. So, but no. The field needs continued to be high in demand. And like, as a planner here, what's kept me gainfully employed is parking, houses too big, and trying to manage the demand for more fields. So you'll see a conversation, for instance, about the throwaway property. Obviously, it's nine acres of open space in RYE. It's had a, it's been identified as a possibility. That's really been a 20-year conversation, for sure. Everything from city buying it and doing turf field there, to other kinds of ideas to have, expand your recreational needs, and that's been an on-again, off-again thing. There's also, in 2011, you start to see this emergence of, well, what about turf? And what would be some possibilities? That study has been talked about, that's posted online, Woodard and Kern Study, and it looked at turf at a variety of locations, including nursery. So, but you also have the Capital Improvement Program. This is an annual program that we've been doing for a long time, but here's sort of the last dozen years of this. What I did is I, anything that referenced the fields or turf, I looked up over the last dozen years, and what you'll see from 2012 to 2016, the idea of rehabilitating Nursery Field to grass was identified as a potential project. And that's following on the heels of the 2011 study. But then there was a pivot in 2017 to turf, and that turf Nursery Field, as well as turfing just for a year, Recreation Park. There was a year in blue, you could see it, turf at Disborough, which is really Founder's Field. That was, I'm sorry, yeah, Founder's Field. Even though that field was built in 2003, you know, 10 years later, there's conversation about turfing the whole thing and putting maybe a rectangular and baseball combination there.
Synthetic turf or grass?
Synthetic turf. When I refer to turf, I'm referring to synthetic turf in all of these.
So all the red is grass and everything else is turf?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, this is not a new idea, I guess, is what I'm saying. And so, you know, to put some of that in context, but it's not as though grass was not part of the conversation.
So let me get this right. So like in Rec Park Turf, it was discussed in 2013, and then from 2013, because you don't have any color there, there was no mention at all.
Yep.
Anywhere in any records, agendas, nothing whatsoever from 2013 to 2023?
Nope.
Nothing whatsoever.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. I can't, I didn't review that much detail.
Right, but for most part, that's the way things are. If it wasn't on agendas, then...
No, no, I only looked at the Capital Improvement Program. That's an annual presentation and document. It's all online, and it identifies potential projects. Some projects have, are more likely to be implemented than others. They're identified, the source of funds may be unknown sometimes, you know, but it is a plan. It's not a commitment to do something, but that's an annual document that is produced and presented to the city council.
Is that a plan to do it that year, or a plan in the future?
Planned in the future. I didn't look at every date, but the planning...
These are basically word plans for the future, but they're never done.
The planning period for a CIP is five years.
So it's sort of a menu of what's possible if you had, I remember when I was on the council last time, it was 50-plus, 60-plus million. If you, if 60-plus million plopped into our laps, this is what you could do, and it was prioritized, these CIPs, by, you know, high priority or urgent, I can't remember what the categories were. But it's not, it's not prescriptive. It's not, it's not saying you're going to actually do every single one of these items. It's sort of a menu of what's possible.
Possibility is what we're thinking about.
It is, and...
And that's from, is that from the, from Greg, or is that from city council?
Staff.
Staff.
Staff, it's presented, and it's done, you know, by charter. It's done in August, so that you can anticipate what may or may not appear in the budget. That's sort of the thinking behind it, which comes out in, you know, October, or whenever it's released. You can, a community like RYE will always want more than it has the ability to afford or want to pay for, and so forth, but that's not the reason it doesn't go in. You know, you want to identify your community needs, and who knows, there could be a grant. There could be some sort of opportunity that comes along, or a shifting in priorities, but at least you have your list of projects that you've identified as possibilities. And so that's where that was, so...
Do you have any idea, and obviously if you don't, don't worry about it, where the decision changed, for example, from grass to turf on Nursery Field, or why turf was looked at at the rec and then never mentioned again? Is there any indication, or is it just sort of...
I can't, I prepare the CIP, as it turns out, so, but what's done, we solicit from all the department heads and other staff folks, what are you feeling are priorities? What are your push? You know, the Rec Commission meets, they, you know, and their priorities shift and so forth from time to time, so...
So the Rec Commission does have input into the CIP?
Through the department, but again, it's a public document. It's presented at a city council meeting. It's there so that you have an understanding of the possible, or at least what some needs that have been identified. Sometimes it's strictly staff-based, things you couldn't possibly know are needed, that have to be, have to be included to make you aware. The CIP isn't always the fun stuff, you know. There's, we see it. You just had a presentation about paving roads. Personally, I find it fascinating, but for the others may not. But you have to pave them, and you have to have a plan for that. Sewers, again, you know, all of these various, you know, infrastructure that you own and maintain, and other things that come along that represent a community need. So...
Christian, if I may, you mentioned the Woodard and Kern Report, and that is frequently mentioned in our current discussions. We're not following the Woodard and Kern Report recommendations in the proposal to develop Nursery. Is that because the current engineering staff have dug deeper, done more work on Nursery that validates that departure? What is the reason?
Well, the current reason we'll get into is because there was this, you know, shift in priority in, say, 2018, 2019. So did a deeper dive, and obviously, there was a lot of studies and so forth that caused that. I don't, I can't, I don't know the exact reason that it shifted in 2016, 2017 in the CIP. I don't know the exact reason.
Christian, I have a very simple question. Was there ever any grass, I mean, you have, these were in the Capital Improvement Plan, but was there ever any grass capital improvement done in any kind of rehabilitation during that 2012 to 2016? So it was just put in, but it was never done?
No, I don't believe that there's been a rehabilitation of that grass field.
So the field exists. I know it's been said, but I just want to make it really clear. So the field has not been touched since it was installed in any kind of really infrastructure rehabilitated way.
It has not gone through a major renovation and rehabilitation. Its maintenance is, you know, not insignificant, but it is not the kind of rehabilitation.
Airing and seeding, basically.
I don't want to say, because I don't do that, but, you know, I don't want to, I'm really trying to stay in my lane. I'm trying to stay for everything that, you know, might give this context.
I love this. This is so great, Christian. It's really so appreciative, because I did watch your other slides, to see how many times it came up and it mattered, and yet, knowing when we did anything is so helpful. So if there's a box in that calendar that you can black out and say, but we did do something in this data, we did, but most of this time, it was on there and nothing happened.
I think also to, you know, 2021, 2022, that's a pivot a little bit, in that we wanted to sort of focus capital, capital, capex, we call it, to really focus on our high priority projects, which are, it's a lot of stuff we have, not like anything we've ever had. So that's why you'll see, it's not even referenced, any of this stuff in '21 and '22.
I'll just say, from my experience, I came to council meetings for a year before I ran for council, and I remember seeing, I think, twice in that period, the Capital Improvement Plan, and like, we would do an update, too. And it was just this long list that kept getting longer. It was $69, $70 million worth of projects with these, the high priority ones being things like sewer, road repair, the salt shed, the DPW building, the courthouse, which we were under mandate. So it sort of languished on the bottom of the list, but you had higher priority things. And so when we're looking at the capital, where are we going to put city capital? These things just never got fuller attention because you had these higher priority things.
Exactly, and priorities change.
Yeah.
Priorities changed after IDA, in terms of where you wanted to spend money flooding for certain parts of the community, looking at those projects again. Those are big numbers. And so sometimes you would see a CIP from the past and it'd have a huge number, $80 million. How are we going to pay for that? Well, I don't know, but there's a $40 million flood project in there. I, we have to identify it. Who knows, maybe the Army Corps or State Agency could, you have it identified in your document. So just as Sarah said, it is not a prescriptive, it's not a mandate, it's a planning tool with financial implications. In 2000, late 2018, early 2019, there started to be this increasing interest from a private donor group to fund field improvements. STANTEC was engaged in 2019 to provide conceptual options for Nursery Field improvements. At that point, it was for grass and turf, and that actually culminated in a presentation in May of 2019 from STANTEC, and that included some council members, Rec Commission members, city staff, members of the donor group. Fairly favorable response in that venue, but it now needs to be brought to the full council, because now we're talking about, we have enough information here that we think it's presentable to the city council. That's what happened on June 17th, 2019, the same STANTEC presentation, or very, very similar. Both presentations for the public are up on the website. They've been up there after we created this Nursery Field website. That presentation occurred in May, but also to the full council, public meeting. And actually, at the end of that meeting, there was a $90,000, there was a resolution to fund $90,000 for the redesign of Nursery Field.
Is that part of the 290?
Yes.
Okay.
That's 2019.
And Christian, was there ever, do you remember why the decision to go with Nursery Field and STANTEC versus Sterling? Because there were two proposals presented by STANTEC. One was for Nursery Field, and the other one was for Sterling. And that was back in 2019, and there's, I'm just wondering what the...
I don't know.
Okay.
Look, anticipated that question? I don't have the answer.
Right.
This became the priority, if it, you know, but this is the point of going to the full council. Let's bring it back, let's keep you up to date. And at this point, it was advancing fairly well. There was a funding of city general fund dollars of $90,000 for consultants.
And was this, was this in hopes that a donor group would pay for it, or was this $90,000 spent?
There was not an explicit expectation that the donor group would pay for it at that time.
The city decided to spend the money without the expectation that a donor group would be coming in?
If I remember correctly, there was, there was, there was not an expectation that there would be a donor reimbursement, let's say. My understanding was that the $90,000 was to look at water, water issues, and somehow or another, between that resolution and the next time we met, it had sort of gotten...
I'll get to that.
Yes, okay.
So really, at this point, it was to fund, what would be involved.
Trying to go into the gym recesses of my memory.
I guess we would call it, conceptually, it was a 60% design. Ryan is just not...
Just go, go in the hall.
So I think it was referred to as a 60% design. There was this conversation that money would be quote-unquote "at risk," but, you know, I'm reading minutes, I can't say that I watched the meeting, but the great thing about the video is that you can, so you can go back to this day and sort of, you know, go through all of that. You know, it was a pretty involved conversation. So what then happened was, in October, there was a presentation by STANTEC. They had a more detailed design, not enough to build or anything, but you had more information than you had before, and they were showing conceptual designs, and there was this turf grass comparison. What does turf involve? What is a grass field improvement involved? And at that point, you had enough information, or better information, more information, to understand that. The council, at that point, declared itself lead agency for the environmental review of turf at Nursery Field. And further, because at this point, you start to see, even before this, but growing concern from some folks in the community about the implementation of this kind of project, and specifically, to your point, Sarah, flooding, or the impact this field may have on that. So the city council funded another $23,000 for hydrology and hydraulic study, again, to be prepared by STANTEC. I completely forget this, but in November of 2019, there was an overview of SIKR and the LWRP review process. That was really for the benefit of the community and city council to understand how this would go through that process. And then, so where am I, where was I, November? And then by this point, we had two big presentations, workshops. Both of these are, the videos of these workshops are online, as well as all the council meetings, but these two things were not, these were special meetings, work session with the city council and the consultants to, you know, respond to a lot of questions. There was a second one that was a public workshop, and again, consultants were there to answer information, and that was February 27th, 2020. At the end of that conversation, it wasn't exactly clear what the next move was. I know we had, there had been prior funding for turf, but I think, I'll say, my opinion at this point, it was not entirely clear, I don't think, that it was turf or grass at that point. So I, the debate kind of continued, but other people have a different recollection, or...
I do have a different recollection, because I think part of the output of this was, and what we got from STANTEC and other consultants involved, was the usage. So, and I think this sometimes gets lost, the amount of usage, in order to keep a grass field safe, usable, whatever, you have, it can only sustain up to 10 to 15 hours of usage per week. So that automatically discounts grass as an option, given the fact that our usage pattern is 36 to 45 hours per week, depending on the season. And we'd even explored hybrid as well. So when STANTEC presented then, and this is all out there, and it persists, to be true, there was even hybrid, but that could only sustain up to 20, 25 hours per week. So when you do, and I remember you... week. So when you do, and I remember using the decision tree analogy there, which is how much usage, the only option that could support that safely from a maintenance and whatever standpoint, was turf. So it did focus on turf, simply because you would be theoretically throwing money away to, to put the money into grass when we know it can't, the usage can't, can't sustain, or the field cannot sustain the usage.
So that's a fair, that's, I absolutely heard that. There were other things too that are more detail oriented, but at that time, it was sort of a big deal, like what kind of infill material did you want to use? Or, you know, some of that stuff. So again, online, take a look, get to the end and make an assessment for yourself.
So this debate is when, thus marked February, March 2020?
February, so my recollection, again, was February 27th. We had, the 24th, we had a work session where we all reviewed this. The 27th, we had a public workshop, which was, I believe, a Saturday. It was hours. And then we were, the plan at that time was to then take this to a vote on moving forward with the next step at our next meeting. If you look at those dates, you will understand that this is right before COVID hit and everything came screeching to a halt.
And so.
The one screeching to a halt, and then there was no activity from March 2020 to May 2023? Is that right?
The council was still, I mean, we were still.
We're still, but there's no discussion regarding nursery anywhere during that poll?
Not on a council agenda.
No, 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 that's not true.
That's almost, that's over three years? There was no activity?
That's not true.
Just looking at minutes like you. So I mean, yes.
So the minutes didn't mention anything about nursery for?
I don't, I looked for if it was itemized on the agenda. Okay. So I, I search nursery. There may have been residents who came.
Julie, you were there. Can you speak about this? Because you were right there. So it didn't, it wasn't even brought up for over three years?
So we were working through COVID, and I think there was a general sense that we had other priorities for a couple of years. So that was the focus.
So this hasn't been discussed for four or five continuously, for four or five years?
It has been in rec commission.
It was a break for over three years?
No, no.
All right. Thank you, Julie.
Are you, what? You asked me a question and then you talked right over me. I'm saying this was.
You never did that before.
Christian, that's really helpful. Thank you. Because I really wanted to understand where we left it before COVID happened. And so this is helpful. I did watch the videos. There was so much material. I just really appreciate the summary. And I think that that's a really important moment because Julie, everybody saw that moment differently. Were we still debating turf versus grass at that time? And then we have COVID and then we have Ida.
Ida, yeah.
Thank you. That's all I needed to hear. Really appreciate it.
But just, the point is, I think that Keith was making is that this hasn't been a five-year ongoing discussion. There was a three-year and two-month pause, if you will. And even talking about this, considering it, nothing happened for three years and two months.
So that, that can be your takeaway. My point in the setup is simply because when it came to June 2023, or when you wanted to take a specific action to advance it, we needed very specific information. And that's what happened in June 2023 because whether it was usage, whether it was type of infill, whether it was other kinds of design criteria, staff and its consultants needed to have a specific statement from the city council so that you could advance an action for environmental review.
Right. And we did, I was there in 2020 and, you know, obviously it was all via Zoom and we passed laws, we, you know, debated and passed on Avon, just off the top of my head. But at least to my knowledge, after, after that March, or whatever it was, that last session, I, I was not discussing Nursery Field for the rest of the year. So that's just my memory.
Yeah. I, I think it, so, and I'm in this position of being the liaison to the rec commission as well. This has been probably on every commission meeting perpetually since that time.
No, that's what I'm just saying. I'm saying that as a city council member during that time, I did not know that that was going on.
Yeah. And my point is, as a community, we have not stopped talking about it.
That's for sure.
For years.
There was no money spent during that time period though, on consultants or anything? So it was basically, nothing was done for three years and two months.
There was nothing done by the council. What ultimately resparked our willingness to put it on the agenda was that a new potential donor group appeared and showed interest.
Also nothing done by our consultants, nobody, no studies, nothing, no money spent.
But was it 39, how many months was it? It was 39 months that monthly, or was it monthly that the RYREC commission would meet and they would discuss this every single month for 39 months about putting turf on nursery? Or how many months did they actually talk about this in the meetings?
So, and I'm going to let Erin speak to this, or Rick, who is the chair of the commission. But field use, the demands and the need for field space is a part of every rec commission meeting. And so the cancellation rates on nursery come up. The demands between, you know, growing programs and how the problem is only exacerbated, that continues to come up. So the need has not dissipated. In fact, it has only grown stronger over time as you see programs go from 200 children to 700 children, as an example.
Nobody's debating the need hasn't grown. We're not debating that. We're debating if this was continuously debated and analyzed and researched for over five years, which I've heard that so many times from our voter base, so many times last summer and through the fall regarding our meetings here. And I continue to hear so far this year as well, as well as tonight, with your snicker earlier in the meeting when this.
I guess my point is this has been a pressing community concern for as long as I have lived here. And so we.
Which you proved from 2002 that it was.
Can I just get a sentence out for a second, please? This is, so we can debate whether or not we, we discuss this every meeting, is irrelevant to the fact that this is a pressing community concern, and it has been in the 10-plus years that I have lived here. So I, I don't, I don't know what the angle is, which is it can't be that important if we didn't, you know, discuss it every meeting. I don't think that's, I don't think that's the case.
Well, actually, it was from master plan in 2080, 1985. And then the recreational master plan, which was in the year 2000, and it said priority accommodations to property acquisition for athletic fields in 2000. So yes, this has been a debate or discussion or a priority from 2000 with this recreational master plan.
That wouldn't be, that wouldn't be.
Wouldn't be nursery field.
We're all in this room tonight because it's turf.
Right, right. I know.
Turf wasn't mentioned in 2000.
I just want to get the misinformation that's been continuously perpetuated out there. And then we can get back to being adults and talk about turf and what we're going to do with nursery field.
So I'll continue and we can, so the purpose of the June 2023 resolution was so that it could be specific. And this is that resolution summarizing here, construction of a synthetic turf field elevated above the 100-year FEMA flood elevation. These are all an outgrowth of the presentations and studies and community input that you had, some for, some against. Appropriate infill, notably not crumb rubber, was specific in the resolution. Robust drainage, safer field users, sensitive to wetlands. You also hired consultants, $150,000, which included 60% design plans, stormwater design plans and related reports and other studies and information. And really, that was to help fund the preparation of the environmental, the environmental assessment form and all the related attachments, as well as LWRP, which is the coastal consistency law that the city of RY has, sometimes referred to as the LWRP, local front water, local waterfront revitalization program, and advisory wetland review. That package of stuff was to be delivered in the resolution to the planning commission for their advisory comment.
So this was, June 2023 is when a new donor group emerged? Is that around the time that?
It reconstituted a bit. So there are people who sort of just turned over a little bit.
Okay.
Christian, one clarification point, just because you're doing such a great job, and I really don't want to, I don't want to take away from your time. 60%, what does it mean to say a 60% plan was done? You are a planning commission. So twice now, I've heard you say that term, 90,000 in 2019, and now 150 in 2023. Was it because of the hydrology work that we needed to do a new set of 60% designs? Is that how it works?
I forget all the details, but you have to understand, we needed to retain a wetland professional. We needed to retain a planning professional. It's not just the engineering of the field. We needed, so I think there was three firms that we retained.
I don't, I'm not questioning the exhaustive work that you did. I'm just trying to get language right so the community understands. So when they did the first 60%, it was a different design that was being done.
No. What happened with the original design, it was commission, and Ryan can weigh in this. The commission, the RFP was for a 60% design. They did not do the 60% design.
Okay.
They, they used the money for, we ultimately, because of the council decisions at the time, there was an H and H study done, there was other presentations, but the 60% design was not done.
Thank you.
It was not done until the June 2023 action.
Well, it was done by September because that's what we did. The EAF, the plans.
Put it up too.
Correct. Yes.
That's helpful.
Yes, thank you.
Because I think language matters. So thank you.
No, no. Thank you for that. So the EAF and all the studies are posted to the city website. There were four planning commission meetings where they went over, they had consultants, presentations from staff, a lot of back and forth. They, they were public meetings, but they were work session meetings because this board was advisory. By law, they have to, they are advisory. In other words, if you look at the city code, they must provide an advisory opinion on the LWRP. But they also, directed by the city council, provided advisory comments on the wetland impacts and, you know, this activity in the buffer. All of those meeting minutes are online. All of the, those meetings are there. But it ultimately culminated in a November 21, again, 2023. They did do it in 2002, but this, again, in 2023, typo there, was an advisory memo. That too is on the city website, has been. And they found that it was, and this is a very brief summary. It was a fairly involved memo. So there, there's a lot of nuance in it. But LWRP coastal consistency, they talked about wetland impact considerations. They had a discussion of alternatives. That's one of the things they got into. And they also requested plan modifications, like changing certain plant, the quantity of plant material, the amount of mitigation area, and some of those concerns.
And just to, to clarify, so they were, you know, you've written it there, but I just want to underscore that it was an advisory memo because they were not also a lead agent. They were, they're, they're an interested agent, I guess? Is that what, so they, they don't have decision-making authority over this particular?
Yes. By statute in the code, they must provide an advisory opinion. They went through every one of the 44 policies and they had a lot of conversation. The memo speaks for itself in its breadth and its findings. So those are the areas that they focused on.
City council is the lead agent in, in this particular instance. So it does have more of a heavy public policy component to it because, because it resides in the city council as opposed to with the planning commission.
Correct. You are the decider.
Yes.
Christian, could you clarify what happened in May 2023? That is, the period of inactivity ended. As I recall, we had the one or more consultants back for a review session.
Oh, yes. Yes. I think it was at least one meeting, we did similar presentation as the workshop in 2020, in which you had the hydrology consultant there, you had the field consultant there. And that meeting in May of 2023, yeah, that too was online. And as, as you recall, that was one or two meetings. But ultimately, the June 23 resolution was born out of that discussion as well. Yes. So December 6, that's the resolution. There was a consultant presentation after they returned from the planning commission. City council adopted a negative declaration and an LWRP coastal consistency. To your point, Sarah, even though it was advisory, they had to have their own, you had, the council had to have its own decision. That is a fairly lengthy document. Again, it is posted online, has been. And all the reasons supporting that decision in terms of the LWRP, but also in terms of Seeker review are all included in that document. That's the basis of your, of the council's finding. There was also an adoption of a resolution to fund $100,000 for that final design. Because you do have to get to final design from 60% design. December 20th, council adopts a resolution to accept the donor group gift. Again, these are all online, these resolutions. In 2024, council adopts a resolution to pause. The pause includes continued preparation of the final design documents. Any execution of any additional contracts must be stopped, or the spending of any city funds towards the project. There was a resolution in the following meeting to have a presentation, which we're doing this evening. And in February, there was a resolution to extend the pause to March 20. And I'm done.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Erin, for those who don't know me, Erin Mance. I have been in the field of recreation for 16 years. I have been with the city for about 10, 11 years off and on, and have been the superintendent for about a year and a half. So field usage and with RYREC, it's what we do every day. Whether that is for athletic fields, our tennis complex, our park amenities, from the picnic shelters to the basketball courts, it's, we live and breathe this stuff. It's something we take a lot of pride in. We look at schedules, programs, participation numbers. We want to offer as much as we can based on the amenities that we have. And we have high expectations of ourselves at the rec department. Whether that's passive or active, we always want our facilities and communities to be able to use it and play and connect to people. So rec holds the master field schedule for city and school properties. Everything filters and passes through the rec department and having, I guess you could say, full control over that. So that's.
School as well?
For the most part. Obviously, the school will schedule themselves first, and then after that, it's us. So I, the department has all that, and I'll show you that coming up. Our authorized user groups, I think, as we all may know, are listed here. We have RY Youth Lacrosse, RY Soccer, RY Rugby, RY Garnets, which is the high school, middle school teams. We have RY Girls Softball, RY Little League, RY Grays Baseball, which also people may know as RY Babe Ruth.
Could you expand your mind on the garnets? How much activity does?
Oh, you'll see.
I figured you were going to get to that. I'll wait.
Yes, you will. Just wait and see. Our authorized user groups with the city are, it's the same list as what you just saw, but I wanted to show you who they serve within the community, what genders and grades or ages. So that is a list of all of them. We basically serve age two all the way up through adult between all of us.
So these aren't just nursery. This is for all of RYREC fields?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, obviously, like, yeah, I'll get to it. We've got rectangular fields, diamond fields. Like, there's obviously a difference between those. This is our participation number. I could go back to 2015 in the current software that I have in regards to participation across all user groups. So on the left-hand side, I have our rectangular fields. On the right side, we have the diamond fields. So I have totals at the bottom and then of each of those. And then at the way. And then at the way bottom, I've got RI athletics and how many teams they had, not participants, but the amount of teams they had over, from 2010 actually to 2023. So there's been an increase of, of anywhere between 18 to 23% within each of the, of the user groups.
And those numbers are going, lacrosse is up that much?
Yes.
Wow, that's crazy.
Yeah. And even though there was a decrease in soccer, it's still less of a number than the, like, oh, they all went to lacrosse. That's not the case. And the seven, it's not a 700, 600 difference there. So RI rugby also, I chose 2015 because that's the first year they actually became an authorized user group and the last group that will probably ever be an authorized user group with the city. So there, they started, I believe, in 2013, but didn't become an authorized user group until 2015 and have solidly been in the program.
So, because I'm going to just, this, you're such, you have so much insight, Erin, and I'm not trying to take from your presentation, I just want to ask a quick question.
Sure.
How do you get to 770? There's 3,500 schoolchildren in the RI city schools. How do you get that many kids playing RI youth soccer? I mean, RI youth grass. Like, I just want to understand that number. I feel really like, and I'm not being sarcastic or anything, I'm like, how do you get to 770?
I mean, I didn't get to the breakdown, I don't.
Are they kindergartners? Are they seniors?
Kindergarten through eighth.
It's kindergarten, kindergarten through eighth grade.
And you have how many teams per grade? And then obviously, it's boys and girls.
Yes.
It's boys and girls. I don't have the breakdown of how, I know there's more boys and there's more girls. I have it, I could probably.
How many will you allow on a roster for like a third grade group of lacrosse players?
Well, I'll show you the.
I know Matt's going to call me later and tell me. But Matt, sorry. No, it's okay.
If you want to just do rough math, if you want to just say every grade has the same amount of, there's, there's nine grades, you want to say 10 grades, so each grade would have 77, each grade would have 77 kids if, if it's.
Per grade.
The straight line, but it probably isn't. But the thing is, if each grade has 77 kids, you probably have, well, Matt, you can speak to that, how many kids on a team? 25, 30?
We don't say no to anybody, so it depends on the grades, the grades are different than others, call it 80 to 100 per grade.
Yeah, so, so, and that, that's probably prime, like, what, fifth grade to seventh grade in there?
I would say it's, like, last year we had 82 in each grade. And this year we have like 70.
And they come to all the practices and they go to all the games and they're really committed. I'm sorry, I just like getting the number.
I just, I would encourage you to stick with the side simply because there's going to be a tremendous amount of detail here.
I'm sorry, Erin. Just push me off.
No, that's fine. Listen, I, again.
I get it, it's fine.
You know, each, you know, and obviously, as you progress through the teams too, there's different commitments that each of these user groups and, and the rec department have for these kids, right? So, but yes, they're interested and they want to play. And we luckily have the option here that they can try multiple things throughout the year and within each season.
Erin, if I did the net, if I did the net math right, it's a 23% increase over eight years.
On rectangular fields, yeah. Yes.
Sorry.
Okay, so trends over the last long time. And what has affected our density and growth within each of the programs. So when I went to kindergarten, it was half day. It's now full day. So I no longer can't schedule kindergartners in the mid, early afternoon. I have to schedule them after school, just like first through 12th grade. So there's competition there. Full day pre-K as well as daycare has also come up throughout the years, changing that scheduling as well. We used to be able to do pre-K programs, an AM session and a PM session. Now, if you look at my rosters and you look at my program numbers, it's more popular to have those after school. We may not have a full day, a lot of full day options in RI necessarily, if you go to and look at the options, but you can pair it with other offerings so you, the kids do get a full day. They can go to the nursery school in the morning and then the RI nature center in the afternoon and so on and so forth. So dual working parents and guardians, we used to have a lot of, I think, single family, a single working households. That puts a strain on staffing struggles and coaching volunteers and requirements that you need, so that affects your scheduling. There's been a growth in female sports, there's been a growth in just sports being more than one season. There's been a growth in modified sports and third teams, so you're not cutting anybody. So you, again, my job is to make as many kids participate as, as you want. I want them to have those memories, I want them to be able to socialize and be connected in that and do what they like to do and try it out. And then obviously, throughout the years, there's been additional age categories as well as obviously sports. Just alone, RI girls softball starts adding age groups as their program grows and their kids start to progress through it. So. Here is a, I had to do two slides, city and school district field. So these are your city fields and your blocks of time, Monday through Sunday. You've got your color coding by group, which is on the left-hand side there, the key. This is, spring is, you know, ultimately right now, April through June, all of our seasons technically start in March. But this is, this is what you will see come this April. It's 20, I wanted to give you as current as I possibly could, so this is next month. It is, again, you know, Monday through Friday is squeezed into a 3:30 to dark timeframe, and obviously, dark changes throughout the season, so keep that in mind and don't get too focused on those end times. And when you squeeze things into blocks here, it's obviously player availability, coaching availability, daylight and weather, which is what's affecting all of our fields across the board. So when you look at rec, you've got three, the first three columns, you have softball, baseball and rec field. I cannot schedule rec, softball and baseball at the same time I schedule rec field. Same with founders one and founders two. If I'm using founders two, I cannot use founders one, which is why you have those Xs. The boxes that are kind of on founders one have a line through them. It's, I couldn't do two colors on my Excel spreadsheet, I'm not that savvy at Excel, that's not what I do. It's shared with RI girls softball and rack for women's softball. So depending on how seasons start, it changes mid-year. I have field preps that I have to also schedule. Obviously, I can't have a, you know, a certain game start at 8:30 in the morning if I can't put lines down. So there's the FPs, which are field preps in there, which is why those blocks aren't taken, they would be taken if they could be. Same with Granger and gag, those are kind of our only open spots that you can see on this chart, based on the fact that we cannot get parent coaches there at that time because they are mostly all working.
Where's Granger?
Granger's in the middle, right after founders two. Oh, wait, where, like physically?
Yeah.
Disbro.
Disbro, okay, that's.
It's that little league middle, in the middle of the park, that small little.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So that's a huge issue, the coaching thing, okay? That's a really important piece.
Yeah.
So if you can't get coaches in the middle of the afternoon after school during the week, what do you do?
Right, so that's why everything, and you'll see even on the next slides, when it comes to school properties, I need to, you know, time matters and density, you know, because of the density and reliability of these fields really matter because of that and the pressure that is, you know, somewhat of a small window. It's a very important window, so I want to get it right and we want to be able to maximize it the best that we can.
Before you go away, so to change slides, so the nursery field is mostly RI youth soccer and RI youth lacrosse, and we're talking soccer is pre-K to 12th grade.
Yep.
And lacrosse is kindergarten to eighth grade, is that right?
Yep.
And it looks like Sterling is also sort of similar as far as.
Yep.
The people that are.
Yeah, and the, in the fall, you'll see, again, this is, you'll see a little slight shift of users here or there. The school, for example, uses Sterling a little bit more in the fall. They have a heavier program in the fall than they do in the spring, but then I have a heavier program in the spring than in the fall because of the user groups and their seasons. So luckily, that somewhat balances out. But yes, I mean, it's a rectangular field, we only have so many rectangular user groups.
And it looks like the high school is using the rec field more for, for soccer.
Yeah, it's great because, I mean, it's, again, it's the 3:30 time slot that it's, you know, they're, they fit perfectly into that because that's one right as they get out of school and that's sort of how.
But it's also spring, and so soccer's a fall sport for the school, so they are.
Right, but you, right, I won't have adult softball in the spring, but so that entire block will turn to green. And it'll be RI high school, RI middle school first, and then it'll be RI soft, RI soccer after.
Lots of colors.
Yes, so here's the school field breakdown. Similar to the, the city, there's not much wiggle room or space. Midland did just come back online this season. It kind of took a three to four year hiatus that we were not allowed to use it based on the renovations that they did over there and the reasoning, many reasonings why we couldn't use it. It just literally came back online, so probably next week, when I have more time to dive into this, we will allocate more user groups into those open time slots there.
So that, that was a huge burden, having that check out for three years.
Yes. And it is actually, it's not a field that we actually line for games, we just use it as a practice field, but that's, and I'll show you in the next couple of slides, you know, the difference between a practice and a game and how that's really important for a practice. I can use more of the field and put more teams on it than I can when it's obviously a game. So yeah, and especially during mid, midweek.
Is there construction equipment out there or what was?
They completely re-renovated the field, they lifted it, they, they angled it and then put sod down and to not ward, void their warranty on the sod, they said you can't use it for several growing seasons. And then after that, it was like, well, you can't use cleats on it, all of our user groups use cleats, and then it was, no good reason, sorry.
Is the Board of Education that was?
Mm-hmm. Well, I don't know if it was the, the actual board, but the school district was telling us, we could not use it.
And now all of a sudden mysteriously, you're back using it?
We kept pushing and pushing and asking and, and pressuring them that it needs to come back online. And they finally said yes, luckily.
Interesting. Find out anymore about that.
I get different answers, and so I don't know what the true facts of the matter of all that. All I know is I was not able to use it, it was a burden and I'm happy that it's back online.
That was the field at Midland, the one that was sort of in front of the playground?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, that used to have the ice skating rink in the winter.
It's directly across the street from the rec.
Julie, do you know where it is?
What?
Yes, of course. Yeah, I was PTO president.
Yeah, we've, we've went all the way through all of the admin on, through, through that process.
I was the PTO president at Midland while this was happening, so we couldn't even do.
They couldn't even use it.
Yeah, PTO things, so don't even get me started.
All things we can't look back and change, we're just going to move forward. So I wanted to give a close-up of nursery field. Again, this is spring, it's, for example, it's, you know, take, you know, third or fourth week of April, this is what you're going to see on the field for spring 2024. It is traditionally how the field has been scheduled. Again, our seasons start in March. We do not open the fields until probably that second week in April, but are always asked to open it earlier. So the chart, bar chart is number of participants during the weeks, during the, yeah, during the week, in blocks of time, based on the chart that's on the right-hand side. So on Mondays, at the 3:30 time slot, I've got 60 kids. At the 4:45 time slot, I've got 60, and at the 6 o'clock, I've got 85. So on and so forth as you go through the week. So what's great about nursery is, and our larger rectangular fields, is that I can divide that field into either smaller fields, stations, however it may be, I don't need to traditionally use it as just 11 versus 11, right? I need to, again, based on the number of participations, I have to maximize each one of our facilities, and by putting multiple teams on a field is how we do that and have always done that.
And that's really according to age groups as well, you're not going to have a, you know, an eight-year-old kid running 110 yards.
Well, right, it's all, yeah, I'm not going to also have kindergartners practicing zoom with eighth graders, that's not.
Right, right.
Safe. So if, when we get to the rain outs and/or cancellations, you can see how it really affects, for example, if it falls on any one of the weeks, it knocks out that amount of kids for that day. And trying to schedule that, if you can schedule that later on in the season, it's, it turns into a scheduling Rubik's Cube and challenge.
Do you go home, Erin?
Hmm?
Do you go home at the end of the day?
Well, I think about this at 4:00 in the morning. So I don't know, I'm at home, but I'm not sleeping.
Watching the weather forecast.
Yes. So I also did a close-up of rec field for the spring, as well as the next slide, which is Sterling, just so you can compare, because I think there's an ask of, oh, can we move something somewhere else? Not really. It, it's hard to do that based on what's scheduled there, and I totally missed, messed up for the rec 5:30 to 7:30's time slot. I said that's 48 people. I actually have two games going on at the same time, so that number's actually doubled. I have four teams playing out there instead of two. So I have to fix that and correct that.
You mean on the weekdays?
The weekdays, yeah, the, sorry, the Monday through Fridays. Saturdays is obviously, I think everyone knows the traditional soccer of like, oh, hearing about how many kids are on the rec. So again, if you get rained out on a Saturday, you know, you're affecting the kids at this, this amount of kids and these age groups, right? So it's, I put the years, those are the years they're born, so you know.
Erin, what did you say that you didn't put on here, that you should have put on here?
The Monday through Wednesday.
The Monday through Friday addition, the two additional softball teams, that number should be 80, not 48.
You're excused.
Huh?
You're excused.
Thank you. Like I said, I also included Sterling here, so you could see how, again, there's, as you saw on the, on the overall schedule, this is broken down by number of participants and how many we have playing at any one time, any one day of the week. And again, your end times vary based on daylight. So I wanted to try and show, I don't know if I have, the, the monthly use, again, I, and if COVID showed us anything, it's, I can use any piece of property we have at any given time. So I've got a rough, quick list of amenities over on the right-hand side, and I wanted to show that, you know, in most of our other parks, we still always have amenities at our other fields, properties, excuse me, than nursery, based on that being, our tennis courts are still open, our picnic shelters are still open, our paths to walk through the park are still open in the months that are traditionally colder. And where I have to shut down, I mean, I even keep, we keep founders open, we keep rec, main rec open so people can use it if it's a nice day or, sorry, I have something in my eye, probably. So it's.
So giving founders open, that, that grass is just beautiful grass there, and it's well done, is that because the field was properly designed and?
Probably, that helps, yeah. Anytime that there's, you know, what the soil's made out of, yeah, how it's, how it's, how it drains, we, it also doesn't have as much use, right? Oh, diamond field does not have as much traffic as a rectangular field's going to have. Half, the, most of the players on a diamond field are standing on clay.
Right, so it's not.
It's not as heavily used.
Having it resting and.
Right.
So I'm, just so I understand this, the reason nursery is one because it's only one amenity, it's a field, right?
Yes.
So like.
But I have to, like we said, I close it off and it can't even be used in any
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the chart. So the, the top one is rec and it has all these different types of amenities and that's why.
Yep.
The numbers are higher, okay, all right, I get it.
Could, could founders be used, not to get into a different tangent, but like, could Matt be using founders with a ridiculous number of lacrosse players that are out there now for the younger grades where you're just, what's the smallest size field for like a second grader?
I mean, I think you'll see when Ryan comes up next, some aerials of it and why we've, it doesn't, I mean, it's, it's hard to be playing as an athlete and you're half on grass and half on clay, you, you know.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but there's, okay, whatever.
So field cancellations, I grabbed the numbers from 2023. I think online are numbers. So field cancellations, I grabbed the numbers from 2023. Um, I think online our numbers up until 2019, um, 2020, yeah, 2019, and then we kind of hit COVID. So I wanted to use full season, fully packed, back online. So I picked 2023 numbers. Sadly, I guess to the percentages, it was a very rainy year. Um, so percentages are a little higher than, um, I think they are in a, not as rainy year, and I'm hoping this was just in a, you know, off year for rain. But you can see, I broke it down by weekday, Saturday and Sunday. And I do think, like I said, based on rain pattern for this particular year, we had a higher percentage at rec than we normally do. So take, you know, take that into account. Um, and I would say nursery is still truly around that 40%, maybe not so much of that 50% that you're seeing on these, on this chart, um, which is the number that we had in 2019.
So any idea why rec was so impacted last year?
We just consistently had so many days back to back of rain and like every Saturday.
So it wasn't the, the surface that was somehow or another different from other years?
And which is why you'll see, it, it does have a lower percentage of nursery in Sterling because it does drain better. And I'm, I'm not going to recommend fixing our first field, our best field first.
No, I just was, it, it was just a question. I didn't, I was trying to visualize why rec would have been better in other years, but not this year.
Yeah, it's just so, because you know, if it, it rained on a, um, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, Fri, right, that, or if it rains on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday.
Right.
I can open rec on, I'm sorry, say, did Monday, Wednesday, Friday, I can open rec on a Tuesday, 30, Tuesday, Thursday, where I can't Sterling. But if it rains Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, then I can't open it for those three days. So it just, you know, it's hard to get this completely accurate because every year is slightly different and what happens and the.
Did you know how these numbers compared to like the last 10 year average or anything? Are they, you said they're higher, but how much higher?
Yeah, we have those on the last presentation that we put in 20, uh, 20, 20, when was it, 2020?
Yeah, you, we remember looking over a three year period of time and it was going from roughly 40% to 50%. So it was getting progressively worse in terms of cancellation rates from 40, and now it's even higher, 54%.
So it's, it's always above 40, 40 to 54, it's not at the range.
With not a good trend.
Right, right.
And that's with pretty much all the fields, that it's all, that they're all going up, the number of cancellations, the percentage.
Yeah, on a rainy season like we just had, yeah, of course it's going to be. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Unless there's other questions.
Thank you, Erin.
Would people like to take a short break?
Sure.
Don't speak.
10 minutes max.
When did you join the council? We can't start without notes, anyway. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to begin again.
All right. How are you all?
How are you, Brian?
I have the, uh, the last piece of, of this presentation to talk about alternative, uh, turf locations in the city. Uh, so our universe of parks, uh, that the city owns is nursery field, Gagliardo Park, rec park in Disbro. Disbro has a few fields, um, two, two that aren't on this list are Feely Field and Granger Field, Granger being the Little League field and Feely Field being the, um, the baseball field there in the back. Uh, so we'll start with nursery and just to recap, kind of where we are to just use some of this information as, as we go through the rest of this presentation for comparison purposes. But the proposed field, or I guess also existing field at, at nursery is 204 feet wide, by 345 feet long. That's the playable area. With a little bit of room around it, that's 82,000 square feet about of, uh, in this case, proposed turf. Of that, just about 19,000 square feet is wetland buffer disturbance. So that's wetland buffer on the existing field that would be, um, disturbed for a field renovation. There is no wetland disturbance. Um, and due to the wetland buffer disturbance, there is a mitigation area which includes planting of 20 trees and a third of an acre of invasive species management. That's, um, that's basically the area between the field and those five houses on the, on the west, on Milton Road there. So that, that area, uh, is, is currently overgrown with invasives.
So invasive species management is pulling the invasives out?
So actually was, what was proposed, um, by the, by the team consultants, our environmental consultants and, and accepted, uh, by the planning commission was to mow that area a few times a year to not have, uh, to, 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 uh, control the invasive growth, but not necessarily need that, uh, more, robust disturbance or rip it up. So basically just mow it, uh, once or twice a month or once every other month.
There, there's heavy vine presence. The vines go.
Our contractors just eat it all up.
Yeah. The synthetic turf proposed, uh, and this was all, you know, in the resolution and the design, but PFOS free materials, um, would, would meet, I'm not sure what the right positive or negative grammatical terminology is for that, but wouldn't require a warning label in accordance with Prop 65 in California. The infill proposed, uh, was, was Brock fill or is Brock fill, which is a.
How is that selected, Ryan? Do you know? Because I know that there are a number of different infill. I mean, obviously we're not doing the crumb rubber, but.
Not crumb rubber was a, um,
Oh.
A requirement from, from the council. I don't think it was ever a consideration. There are multiple types of, uh, infill and I have to go back, uh, some years in those presentations to go, uh, with them, but they're some natural options, uh, this being one of them. There's things like coconut shells and walnut shells. Uh, there's manmade products, um, that, uh, so basically there's a variety of infills that don't have the same properties that a typical crumb rubber would have. And there's, you can choose, um, what was proposed is this Brock fill.
And it's less hot, I guess. It, it doesn't heat up as much as crumb rubber.
So, so there's some benefits to Brock fill, um, or, or any natural infill. And, and one of those would be, um, heat or, or less heat than, than a crumb rubber or a rubber product would be. Um, and they have like vinyl coated rubber. They have coated sand. There's all these different things, um, in infill that you can use.
As I recall, the Brock fill as, say, compared to nutshells, doesn't migrate as easily.
Correct. So, so there's, that's right.
So what I, what I have read, a number of cases that it actually has a problem migrating when there's a lot of rain. So there are a number of cases in, uh, athletic fields in Maryland and in a couple of other locations where when it rains, it becomes slippery and it's sort of, the turf, the turf top will, um, ripple, I guess. And, uh, and then there's a fair amount of migration. And there was a discussion about this, I think on a, on a coach's website about the, the use of Brock fill and also, um, this, uh, athletic field at a, a school in Maryland. Where they had. So I, that was the only reason I asked because it seems, it has the benefits of, of not being crumb rubber, which I think we all agree is, is something we don't want. Um, and also it is cooler than crumb rubber, but it does, there has, there have been these complaints about it in a number of instances.
Every one of them has, as we can get into it, but I'm not certain it now is, is the time to do it, but every one of them has pluses and minuses. Every one of them may require additional infill to be added in periodically, more so than others. Um, some of the wood ones will absorb water. All of a sudden that water freezes. All of a sudden you have more rotational resistance, which could add to additional injuries. There's, there's all kinds of pluses and minuses to every single one of them, but it, for the most part, the main issue is it's not the rubber.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would also say that there's.
Get that out at some point, but.
And then the last, just the last thing I wanted to say and then, um, is that it is, at least from the Stand Tech presentation back in 2019, these non-crumb rubber infills are always more expensive and have shorter, uh, time lifespans. So that just has to be taken into consideration than the crumb rubber.
I would also just.
Some studies that there's, and the, the, some of these different ones will rub together and create more of a dust and that dust may not be very healthy to be breathing in. And there's all kinds of things where we can get into at some point regarding which one to choose.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's why we hired consultants, right, is to balance all of these things and, and come up with a recommendation. Wood dust is actually not associated with Brock fill, Brock fill infill. And, and I, I guess I'd also point out, Sarah, to your point of maybe getting slippery and, and whatnot, um, so is mud, which is what that field is right now, most of the time. So I, we're also, I, I think, going against a really unsafe, um, you know, filled, that field that is, is muddy and slippery all the time.
When it rains, it's muddy. And this is, the complaint has been about Brock fill is that when it rains, it becomes, um, hazardous. So just throwing it out there.
And regarding freezing, I, I don't think we're scheduling that field in freezing weather.
It's just an issue. We don't have to dig into this subject too deeply because it's, we're a little ahead of ourselves. But anyway, let's hear the rest, please.
Sure. Um, and then just in response to some questions, we included, uh, replacement cost in, I guess, what would be today's dollars. Uh, so to replace the turf, um, in however many years that would be, a decade, it, it would be about $800,000. And if you wanted to, um, you could remove that turf, that synthetic turf, um, leave, leave the drainage layer, remove the turf, remove the shock pad and put in, um, topsoil and, and sod. Uh, and the cost of that is about $600,000.
Can I ask a question about that?
That's really, yeah, I'd ask that question. I think that's so interesting.
How much is the whole drainage portion of this at nursery versus the synthetic turf as far as cost goes?
Um, I, I think from the, the cost estimate that was presented, um, it was somewhere in the 300,000, 350 range for the, for the drainage layer.
So the, the rest of the 3 million was for the turf?
Yeah, the turf, um.
I mean, it's, the replacement is 780, so it couldn't be much.
Yeah, the cost estimate, um, you know, we got up to three, because I.
3 million is a total cost, we think, right?
The construction cost estimate, uh, was under two, and then it got up to about 2 million with contingencies.
Right.
And then what was added to that was the soft cost, both what's worrying the whole and future.
Of the, of the 2 million, the construction cost, if you can tell me how much of it is the drainage system versus the turf on top? I mean, it looks like at least half of it, it must be the drainage because the turf replacement is only 780, right? Or is, is that, am I reading that wrong?
Yeah, 780 would include the removal of the turf, removal of the infill, removal of the turf, trucking that turf to the recycling facility, uh, removal of the shock pad, re-leveling the sand base, putting the shock pad back, put turf and infill back in. So that, that's the 780 process. Similarly, if you, this natural 595, $600,000 number, remove the turf, remove the shock pad, remove 10 inches material, put topsoil back in sod, that's 600,000.
The reason I ask the question is, is eight or 10 years when the turf has to be replaced, maybe people will think turf's too dangerous or whatever, and we want to go back to grass. We could go back to grass for a cheaper amount than redoing the turf, but we're, we've gained this, um, drainage system. So I'd be interested to know how much that drainage system costs, because that's, that's a, a cost that if we, if we end up after eight years or 10 years, going back to grass, we'll, we'll still have a better drainage system, I understand.
The only thing you have to consider on that too though is the usage pattern, right? So if usage patterns decline, right, if all of a sudden we only need it 10 hours a week, then yeah, that would be an option. If usage patterns stay at north of 20, 25 hours a week.
No, I'm not saying we decide that, but I'm just saying.
No, no, but just be another factor to consider is my point.
Like, if you were looking at this as let's try artificial turf and we could always put grass back, what are we gaining through this process? We're gaining a drainage system that we don't have now.
Yep.
Leveling of the field.
I'd be interested in knowing sort of what that costs.
The cost roughly be now for, for putting the drainage system in for natural grass? We wouldn't have to put that much of a drainage system in, right?
You would, you would still need a drainage system. It would be different. We did not do a detailed cost estimate for natural grass.
Not nearly as extensive as the, uh.
Uh, no, it act, it might be different. It, it might be as extensive, just, just different. You'll still, you still need pipes and gravel and everything. So you're still going to spend a couple hundred, few hundred on a drainage system.
It would still be roughly in that 300,000 range to put in a drainage system regardless of the surface that goes on top, whether it's synthetic or grass.
Your overall cost for natural grass would probably be 800,000?
Yeah, I think we, I think that was an estimate from a few years ago. Yeah, somewhere around there.
Be good if we could, if I, we don't have the number now, but if we could get the number sort of broken down for, at nursery, how much is the drainage? How much is the turf? Just what are the pieces of the construction project, the cost pieces?
Oh, Ryan, as you do that, I think for either a grass or for the turf field, there's the question of removing the old field in the first instance and then leveling the field. And I think that will take place with either.
Yeah, I think you brought that up. Anyway, go ahead.
So we'll get into some options. Uh, we drew some rectangles on some parks and I'll run through these real quick. This overlay of a multi-sport field is nursery field. Just picked it up from the design, copied it over gag. Uh, it does not fit on Gagliardo Park. What would fit is 150 foot by 290 foot field. That would be pretty much property line to property line. You wouldn't have a playground. You wouldn't have a picnic pavilion. You wouldn't have a Little League field. Um, you wouldn't have a viewing area. You wouldn't have parking. Uh, but it's a possibility. If you wanted a shorter field than 290, you can potentially get some playground area back. We'll move to rec park. Um, fire questions off, but some of these, they were worth, I drew rectangles on stuff, so everybody can see what we're doing, but they're, they're.
Love your rectangles.
Games, I mean, you need a regulation size field, do you not, to play games?
Um, yeah, so we'll, we'll, I guess, get into that in a, in a second.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the things you're going to.
This is the, this is one of the two plans from the 2011 Woodard and Kern Concept, uh, Report. Uh, it shows two 180 by 330 foot fields that are 10 feet apart in between them. Um, a reconfigured, two reconfigured softball fields, um, of, uh, I think 215 feet to the outfield line there, which is, uh, pretty, it's, it's the size for a, uh, a youth or a girl's softball field, but not, I, I think some of these adult softball, uh, guys are, are pretty big and they, they hit further than that. Um, and there's some, and it'll come up in an area on two slides, but we did some work recently with pollinator gardens and walkways that are in the way of this. So I, I'm not, it's a long way of saying I'm not comfortable with this layout, um, today, but it was what was shown in 2000, 2011. The other concept that Woodard and Kern showed, um, was two east-west directional fields, um, one at 180, 330, the other a little smaller, um, still required a shift in the softball fields and still would potentially be in the way and some improvements and I. in some of the improvements. And I didn't do a full analysis, but, you know, it looks like there might be some, some of those large gum trees along Melon Avenue. We need to come down to do these. So again, I just, like, before, before we put effort into these layouts, I think there's some, some pause there.
And the 180 by 330, that's the current lacrosse for, I guess, unified, but now there's talk of, of girls' lacrosse going to 365?
Yeah, there's, there's, and I'm out of my-
Me, too.
-lane here with, with lacrosse, but there's, girls and boys use different sized fields today. There is talk, or some ideas of a unified field, for the same field for, for both, both teams.
And that would be 365?
I think that's 3, 360.
There's not a whole lot of information on that.
Yeah, I, I don't-
Speculating out into the future, which I think would probably never come to fruition.
Don't, I don't disagree.
But I, I think probably the best to be working with is, is 60 by 110 yardage-wise on fields.
So that's the 180 by-
For high school, if you take a look at the website for this national governing body for high school lacrosse, that's what they're talking about, is 60 by 110. And NCAA actually gives you a range.
Yeah.
It's a little smaller, and a little longer, and a little wider, and a little narrower. So there's, there's a floating range. So as far as, and I'm pretty sure that if you take a look at the measures of a lot of the high school fields around here, and obviously Nugent Field is restricted, because we, we only actually only have five lanes for the track, because we couldn't fit a six in, because one edge of the track is almost into the brook, and the other is out at the end of the property. So I, I don't think that, we could never put a larger field in Nugent Field and have a track there. We would never have a larger field that actually fits. And I think Nugent Field is, what, 10-foot, 10, 10 yards in the, in the goals, behind the goal line, in the zone?
Yeah, I, I haven't-
And it's, so it's 100 and-
It's, so a football field is 150 by 360, if you go edge line to the end of the infield, right? So it's, it's 50 by 100, and then add 10 yards for each end. So it's, I, I not want to speculate, but I'm assuming a unified field of 360 just means you turn your football field into a unified lacrosse field, and that's why it is, and we don't have a, a football field here. But 180 by 330, if you go to that National Federation High School Sports website, is the, is the boys' field. I think the girls', there's something that they want to, they want more room behind the goal. Not, not my, not my-
But the thing is, the, the other part, Matt can speak to this, as far as lacrosse is concerned. The oldest, did you guys go to, was what, 7th grade?
I'm sorry?
For Ryth Lacrosse was the oldest?
8th grade.
8th grade, okay. So, so the oldest, did they go as 8th grade? So there's never a high schooler?
Mm-hmm.
That's, high school teams aren't playing on this. So, so what would happen if, if your field was not the official high school size? Could you not have-
Fifth graders start playing high school-sized fields up to 8th.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that. But the thing is, say, you, you're going to another community, and their field is a little bit smaller. Do you guys not have the game, or is it not a sanctioned game?
Uh, I've never been on a field that's not regulation. By the eye, maybe you've done that.
Yeah, by the eye. But the thing is, if you can eye out 110 yards versus 120 yards from ground level, that's pretty good. I'll put a drone up, and I don't think I could do it from the drone, but anyway. Go ahead.
So, we'll just, we'll, we'll get there. Also at rec, this is, again, nursery-sized field shown at rec. This, this fits. What you would end up doing in this, and Aaron's presentation kind of got to this, at least with the data, right now, there is soccer and lacrosse played at rec in this location, and there's also the softball field to use. So high school comes in at 3:30, they use the rectangular field, and then at 5:30, adult softball comes in. So if you did this, what you're probably looking at, in lieu of trying to find a new location for two softball fields, you'd be looking at turfing the whole thing, turfing the softball fields.
Turfing the baseball field, the whole, the whole area.
Turfing the infield, there would be brown turf, you turf the whole thing, and then you would just keep the same usage that you have now. That would, that would be the easiest-
So it looks like about double the size of, of what you'd have to turf if you-
Yep. 82 at nursery to, to 170 here.
82 square.
Then you'd have nowhere to send softball and baseball.
That's it.
You would play, you would, they would just hit into the, into the soccer field as they do now. In other words, if it was all turf, you're just going to have what, exactly what you have today.
No, I know, but you were, if you were, but they're scheduled at the same time. My point is, if you were scheduling-
No, I don't think either one of these, neither, there's, there's only one, where is she? Is Aaron still here?
At rec, there's either soccer or lacrosse.
On this, on this field here, you only have one, one game going on at a time on this field, right?
At, at rec, there's either soccer or lacrosse, or there's two softball games.
Oh, you're going to have two going on?
There's not softball and soccer at the same time.
Right.
Okay.
So whether that's grass and clay, or turf, it, it, it works.
Yep.
What you couldn't do is turn this into an only rectangular field without finding a location for two new softball fields.
Well, that's my point, because you, if you were using it, rec field is being, yeah.
You can't run after a kid and have to step up.
Now, let's just, let's keep going here. This field-
Let's just keep it going.
At Founder's Field, you would have this issue. So if you, right now, Founder's Field, Founder's 1 and 2, Founder's Small and Large, whatever you want to call it, there's a softball field, and there's a baseball field. There is no rectangular sport. So if you were to do rectangular field at Founder's, they're, they're playing softball at the same time that you would want to play soccer. So you would have to find a new location for a softball field, and a new location for a baseball field, or tell one of the user groups they can't play there anymore while there's soccer playing.
And it's a smaller field.
This field that, this is, again, I, I included every, you know, included these 2011 Woodard and Kern plans, so we can just, they're still relevant. This field in the plan is, is shown at 180 by 300. We, we showed it the other way, that's nursery, it doesn't fit. It would also fit a 180 by 300 in this direction, and a north-south, if you did it, I'd probably put it this way, but that's Founder's Field. And again, that would require relocation of, of two fields. So even if you wanted to say, let's do rectangular here, and we'll move baseball or softball to nursery, you could, you just don't have a baseball field. Nursery's not big enough for a baseball field, it would be big enough for one softball field if you wanted to go there. But now we move to Sterling. That's nursery field on Sterling. The tree line's there, so you can't really see it, but it doesn't fit. That, that field, that northern end of the field would be in that, that wetland area. Sterling, as you know, is on the hill, so it's about 15 feet above the welland area, so you're looking at retaining walls. The existing field at Sterling is about 150 by 290. I think we wheeled it off at 147 by 287 last year. It's, it's as big as the Ry City School District's historian will line it in Sept, in, in April. In other words, he goes out there every April and puts a different field on, but that's, that's pretty much the biggest one you can fit. Let me just get into a little, can, do I have a mouse? This red line is the fence that's there, the chain link fence. And then this blue line is the wetland buffer. Not the wetland, the wetland's down in that marsh, but the buffer area does extend onto Sterling Field, the 100-foot buffer. So-
The chain link fence is right or wrong where everything drops, right?
Correct. So if you were to, if you were to turf Sterling as it is inside the fence, it's, it's, there's 95,000 square feet of grass there today, that's basically what I'm saying. There's 82,000 at nursery, there's 95,000 if you were to turf the whole thing at, at Sterling. So Sterling, we talked about it before, it's a land, it's a capped landfill. Turf is an acceptable cap material, whether that's natural turf or synthetic turf. But if you do anything to Sterling of significance, there would be a regulatory process with the DEC to go through. You're, we haven't done any of this, so we'd, we'd have to get our geotechnical and environmental people out there, but you're probably looking at elevating that field, not digging down, but you'd-
You don't want to dig down.
You don't want to dig down, right? So you maybe skim a little bit off the top, you'd be putting some geo membranes down, then putting your, your fill in your drainage layer on top of that, then the field on top of that. So I would expect, you know, your field would be two or three feet higher than what it is today in order to not have to dig down into the landfill area.
And why, I just acknowledge my ignorance, why is this one need drainage, and it would have to be raised up, just so I understand, and the public that's listening understands? You said you could cap it with a turf field, so why raise if it's not, I'm trying to imagine flows of water and all the things we learn from listening to the consultants come for nursery. I just want to understand it a little bit.
Yep. This field doesn't drain well either.
Okay.
So, so it's a landfill, and then it was capped, so there's two or three feet of dirt on top of the landfill.
Okay.
And then we put grass on it, or the Osborne Home did. So if we wanted to build a new field with drainage, that works. Whether it's natural grass, if we wanted to redo this thing, just like nursery, or synthetic, just like nursery, you would be, you would be putting a drainage layer in, pipes, right? We couldn't put those pipes in the ground, we'd have to put them on the ground, and then put the field above it, in, in the grass or, or, or synthetic.
Thank you. Do you seem to understand- Do you have any rough idea how much that would cost to put a drainage system, regardless of whether it's turf or grass on the top?
You know, I don't. Pipes are pipes, so I think, you know, you'd be looking at, probably similar to what you're looking at nursery, maybe a little bit less, just because it's, it's smaller.
And you're not doing as much digging.
Right. But you're, so you're also looking at an additional cost for the additional unknown, currently unknown requirements through the regulatory process. So that can add, you know, that could add some, some money to the, to the project.
All, all these alternatives, right? I mean, we've already spent $290 on nursery. Can we expect that we're going to have to do, I mean, it's a different place, Sterling is a different place, but I imagine there will be environmental things, and we'll have to, will we sort of have to spend another $290, or do we think more than $290 if we were going to, you know, do this at Sterling? And same with sort of the other locations. I mean, I, I imagine, you know, there's going to be soft costs involved in, in any area where you do it. We've already spent soft costs at nursery, but if we decide to do it somewhere else, those are additional soft costs.
Start over again.
Right.
Yeah, the, the work is gonna, is going to be very similar in the design for a field.
Right.
You know, there's, there's generalities of design might cost you 10% of the construction, depending on what it is, which is kind of where we are. That does include construction inspection. This, this would be a little bit more intensive. I think we'd have a geotech consultant doing some, all the regulatory permits. So I think you can expect a little more. And, you know, there's probably, we're, we're paying all the, every time the consultants are at this podium, so depending on how, how many meetings that is, you know, that, that number can vary.
And a lot would depend on what needs to be done as far as-
Correct.
-environmental review, or, or hydro, hydro whatever it is-
Yep.
-review, and, and that's-
And how much we would encroach on, you know, on the area. I guess, it's two things to that point. I mean, the city undertakes, you know, or hires consultants to undertake various analyses all the time, and a lot of times, we don't go, we don't pursue them, right? I mean, there is that, you know, that happens, you know, quite a bit. So with this, what you've identified is that Sterling has problems with the efficiency and effectiveness of its, of its playing time. So it's not a problem, it's not a, it's not a, it's a problem that needs to be solved. So at some point, we would have to engage a consultant to look into what would need to be done if we wanted to actually utilize the field to its best potential. So that's not going to go away. It's just a matter of when, when we do it, or we just suck it up, and we, you know, continue to, you know, suffer through with it not being as, as, as an effective and efficient a playing field as it could be. So, so this is, this, this is all I'm saying, this is very helpful, because it, it identifies a potential solution, at least for Sterling, but of course, it will involve costs and time.
Yep, correct. So last slide, I was, we were asked to, to look at maximum size fields. So, so you could fit a, what could be 180-by-330-foot field at Sterling, if you were to build a retaining wall where that red line is along the road, to fill that area in, remove the food scrap location, remove the parking, build that wall, 15-foot-high wall, just to get that extra, extra length. So same thing as this last slide, as far as regulatory, maybe a little bit more intensive with that wall construction, and then, and then the wall on top of that.
So you could, you could make Sterling into a 180 by 330?
Yeah, I mean, this is a project. You know, that, that wall is, is not a small wall. You're probably looking at, you know, 3/4 of a million to build the wall. Then do everything we were going to do in the last slide, drainage, fill it, membrane permits, you know, the whole thing. So it's, it's, can, can it be done? Sure. It'd be great.
Does it matter if it's 180 versus 204? I mean, those are the differences in the sizes we're talking about.
Yeah, so 180, you can kind of see it on this slide a little bit better, but Sterling, the reason why you don't, you have, it pinches back here with, with the grade and the, and the fence, right? It drops off. So in order to get 204, this end line would have to be back over here, right? So you, you lose length when you want to go wide. So you couldn't get, if you did this, we couldn't go any further to the south with the retaining wall. We need to keep that road. There's county easements to this tree line over it.
That's not really why I was asking the question. The question, for me, is, is, a 180-yard field versus a 204-yard field, does that matter to one sport or another? Or, or can you play the same sports on the same fields?
Yeah, uh, these are, those are, I have answers that I've been told to that. It's, it's not really my answer. I'd probably talk to the, the groups or the, the coaches on that. Typically soccer wants wide, lacrosse wants long, that's what you'll, you'll see. If you, I'm not good with a track pad, or I'd do it, but if you go to, let's just say, any high school, Ry High School, you'll see the soccer field's lines widest, and then lacrosse and field hockey and football inside of that. So soccer, soccer wants to be wide, and then the trend is, is lacrosse to get longer. So, you know, 180 by 330 is a, a nice field. I don't know that anybody would turn it down just to get that.
Do you play high school soccer on that, or in high school lacrosse on that field?
Yeah, you got to talk to them. What I, what I'm told when I ask that question is, high school soccer, now that's not, you know, the 2017 year on Monday is a nursery, but high school soccer doesn't, doesn't want to play that, that narrow of a field. But that's not my answer.
It's too small for high school soccer.
That's the answer I've been told. But again, I'm not the, I'm not the group-
Right, right.
-to answer that.
For high school soccer, are they playing on Sterling or nursery at this point?
Uh, what do you got, Aaron?
Modified, yes.
Modified plays on Sterling.
So the 7th, 8th grade-
That's middle school.
Middle school.
Yeah, but it's, you know, they're, they're made to be the same size. Wanting to, wanting to have the same size is the only option they have, so they play there.
So it's 11 by 11 at that point in modified?
So it's 11 by 11 at that point in modified?
And just, you know, one thing we haven't talked about is we've talked about hours of use and how important that is and, and volume and, and, you know, I think a lot of us have thought that maybe if you had a field at Sterling, you could put lights there. I mean, lights are out at nursery fields. It's in a neighborhood. Sterling, potentially you could have lights, maybe at Ry Rec you could have lights. I don't know. I don't know what else, what we can really talk about, but those are potential possibilities, are they, or?
The problem is you have little kids in some cases. So it's not like you're going to have little kids in school nights, right? So if, if your thought is the, the.
Well, some of the kids are going to be, there's a range, right?
No, but still, if you're saying if we're going to 7:30, you want to go to like 8:30, 9:30, that's still late on a school night.
So soccer's going out to 12th grade and Matt's going out to 8th grade. So is it too late for a kid ending his practice at nine o'clock at night on a school night?
If you could put in a field with lights.
We don't have practice.
No, I understand that, but if he had lights, if he had lights.
I don't know.
Do you?
Most 7th, 8th graders are going to score by 7:30, 8:00.
No, I understand, I understand that, but the thing is, say for instance, we had this tremendously rainy week and grass fields were shut down, no options. We got a field for you, however, we have to adjust that field time that you originally had from a 6:30 to a 7:30 practice. That practice is now going to be 7:30 to 8:30.
It doesn't sound any different than we have right now.
Yeah. Right, but the thing is, Erin's only, she's only scheduling out to 6:30. So.
That's a start. 6:30 was a start time.
A 6:30 start time, but the thing is, I think if you take a look at sundown throughout the year, spring and fall, you're, you're, for the most part, your soccer is about two and a half months in the fall and lacrosse is about two and a half months in the spring. Roughly. And if you take a look at actually sundown, granted, coaches probably shouldn't have their kids out on the fields after sundown, starting a little dark, starting a little dangerous, but coaches are coaches. So, so as far as, so the latest, depending on how dark it is, you start at what, 6:30 and you have it at 7:30?
But maybe less there.
Yeah, but, but sometimes if you take a look at actual sundown, there's, there's, there are sundown, official sundowns, the sun drops below the horizon. Throughout the fall and throughout the spring at different times, that sundown is actually around 6:15 or so. So regardless, with the lights, you can get additional playing time.
Councilman, we are, we said on the last meeting we were available for all the Q and A you had. This is my fifth question I've gotten in the crowd.
Okay.
We're available.
All right, I'm, I'm trying to.
All the boards and these organizations are living this and helping.
Right.
With all these answers, I, we've been saying for months, we are available.
Okay.
No one's asked us a question about this stuff. We have the answer, just schedule time. We'll sit down and walk the field.
Okay, I'm sorry.
If the landfill makes sense on a Tuesday, it doesn't work for, for students.
Okay, okay.
You want to run soccer league at Sterling?
Okay, 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 okay.
You're good when the sun goes down, we got homework to do, dinner, we're done.
Okay, thank you very much, Matthew. So we have the people here and we're actually having discussions, seeing you're here and you run Ry through cross. I apologize for asking you questions in this environment, which we're not supposed to be asking you questions, I guess, but I'm thankful that you're here, that you did ask, answer the questions that I asked you. So, so we're going through this process, kind of a workshop, I suppose, informally, and we have people here that are putting our presentations, that put a huge amount of time into it. And there's not a better moment to speed this process along because you for one and all your people want this done yesterday. So, so expedite that. If I could ask you some questions to help us expedite, that would be awesome. Okay, I, I understand, I understand that. I, I'm just asking about your group. I'm not asking you about rugby. I'm asking you about, I'm, I'm asking you about lacrosse. So I apologize for asking you about that, but you want this done. You're disappointed you didn't get this done. Obviously the hundreds of letters that we're getting in, your people want this done yesterday. So I'm trying to expedite this and ask you some questions that we have the experts here, the people that are controlling this. So instead of getting them together again and you together again and everybody get together again, we're doing it here today now. Okay, is that okay?
I'm happy for any of you.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay.
Keith, can I ask? Can I ask a different question? Or it's a question I don't know can be answered right now and I don't. So can you go back to your first slide with, yeah, well, right there, right? Okay. So everyone knows that we're living in a time in which the entire nation's communities are fighting, right? Over this turf conversation. It's the big elephant in the room and we're having it. You read that list and you go, wow, we're really ahead of the game. I'm so impressed with this. There's no chrome rubber. We're going to follow the California Prop 65. There's going to be no PFAs in the materials. I need to know in a very real and confident way, and I'm looking at you, Greg, I don't want to hear it from David Nardone and I really respect that you picked him, but I don't want to hear it from him. I want to know right now in California, if they actually have a material that they're using for turf fields, especially since Gavin Newsom just said any town can ban artificial fields, just passed that bill, what, two months ago? I want to know if there is a synthetic turf material that's out there that is PFA free. And I, I would imagine, because I've actually done a lot of reading, I would imagine that there is a tremendous amount of, we don't know yet, right? We don't know how to study it. We're looking at fish and rivers. I've been reading quite a bit, but I don't want to be disingenuous and set ourselves up by saying, we are only taking a synthetic turf that is PFA free and meets California Prop 65, because I don't know if it exists yet. That is the thing that's sitting with me every night that I worry about and I don't have an answer, but I want to just make sure the question's there. And I'm not expecting any of you to have that answer. I just need it to be said out loud.
Yes, there are, there are materials that meet these. This is part of.
The, the green grass, the shock pads, everything. I real.
Yes, that is, that is what we, that is what we have explicitly put in there.
I would love to see, I would love, and not from David Nardone, I would love to see.
Can you, wait, I just, I think that's dangerous. I do not like any of us or anybody else discrediting the consultants we have hired to help us.
No, I'm not discrediting them. I'm just saying we need a verification of him.
But that's what we're.
We need one verification of David Nardone. That's all I'm asking.
We've had multiple consultants on this and we have put this out there. I just, I think.
Julie, I don't want to have an argument about this. We have a difference of opinion.
No, it's not opinion, it's fact.
No, no, no.
So that's my concern, Jamie, is that there are facts that have been presented and those facts have not changed. They have not aged in five years. They haven't. I, I know we haven't talked. No, 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 I'm talking.
We have a community that doesn't believe it, so I just.
But we don't need to perpetuate that up here. There is fact, there is data. And my point is, nothing I heard tonight has changed. And this is, none of this is new news, none of this. All of this information.
We 100% need playable, playable fields. I couldn't be more of an advocate for it. I want to fight for this town to get playable fields. I want everyone to know right now that I am in it to get playable fields for our kids, but I think we owe the community. I quit, that answer, that's all I'm asking.
We've answered that, Jamie. And so if, if you believe that, if you believe that's true, that you want playable fields, then end the pause. And so I'm going to, I'll motion, let's end the pause. Let's get the full, wait a minute, I'm talking, I'm talking. Let's end the pause. I'm going to make a motion for it right now and let's get the rest of this data. Let's get the full plan. We had, we had contracts we could have signed and didn't. Let's sign them. Let's get the full plan. Let's see if the funding shows up. All of that is in there, Jamie. If the bid, the bid requirements are that you meet these specs. That is the bid that we would put out there. If we don't get a bid back that meets those, we're not going to accept it.
You made a resolution, I'll second.
All right. So withdraw the pause, there's a second.
So, so wait.
Can I discuss it?
Please.
Actually, if I could just add a couple of things based on the, the discussion.
I'll go after you.
Thanks. So, so I talked to Jeff Grayden, Aaron Pim and Emily.
Keenan.
Keenan had graciously given me his telephone numbers, so encouraged me to call him. He was, could not have been nicer and more friendly. A couple of things that he pointed out were, first on the, on the turf in terms of usage that, you know, for Princeton, the upfront cost, as he says, for turf is justified because they play the blank out of it. They do have lights. So I do think that there is that natural extension to talking about lights. If you look at the original StanTech presentation back in 2019, it's all about cost per hour. And of course, the cost per hour plummets when, when you can play the fields more. So, you know, it, it seems, it seems odd that we're talking about not using nursery field anymore and he, you know, than, than what would be currently scheduled if, if we didn't, if, if we were using turf. Because he, that's what he says. He has lights, they play till 10, sometimes midnight. So, so that was, that was on that one. And then on the, the turf and plastics. So I was confused about the infill versus the covering. And I thought with the covering, that as long as you kept a handle on the infill and made sure that it didn't migrate, that, that everything was fine. But he said, no, 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 the, obviously the turf is, has microplastics. And, and he said, it's a quote, "problem for the industry," unquote, because the polyethylene fibers will break down immediately, which is why in his presentation, he was talking about how when the athletes leave the field, they should have these various.
Troughs and scrubbers.
Troughs and scrubbers to make sure that they, right. And that Princeton actually has, they use a blower every day that they've, that he says costs $10,000. Each blower costs $10,000. So, so there is, regardless of the infill, you have to consider the, the top and the top is never going to change. It's always going to break down and it's going to break down because they're cleats and it's, it's used. And he said, he wouldn't recommend, you know, after seven or eight years, he's, he says it gets, it gets really bad. So just to put, to, to sort of respond to what Jamie was saying, there, there, we have to put it into context. There's a reason why there's a bill at the New York State that is considering synthetic turf fields because there are still unknowns. And it is very much not fact that, you know, that, that, that these things can be handled. So I just wanted to add that.
So a motion's been made. I, I don't, first of all, I think this is important enough that we want everyone here and Josh Nathan is not here tonight. He had a business thing that came up and he couldn't be here. So just, just because of that, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to, to end this now or, or decide however we want, we want to end it. But, and, and I also think that the idea extending it to March 20th was because we wanted to take this in, think about it, talk about it, figure out what everybody, where everybody is, allow the public a chance to digest this and come back on, on the 20th and, 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 and participate. So I don't think, I don't think you have, you know, the votes and the pause right now. I would recommend you withdraw. We can go through the, we can go through the motions. I certainly don't think we should end it tonight.
You know I can't be here on the 20th.
I know, and so we're going to have to. What we're, what we're going to have to do is if, we're going to have to understand when everyone's here and maybe we'll have a special meeting or whatever, but I think it's, it's got to be at least till the 20th. If people can't be here, we'll, we'll find the date when everybody's here. And, and, but I, I don't think, I don't think there's consensus to end the pause tonight. I'd frankly have some more questions and I'd like to digest some of this. Some of this stuff is different.
It's not.
Well, it, it's different to me anyways. Some of the information up there is stuff we haven't seen before. And so if you want to have the motion, fine. I, I just don't think it, I, I, I'm going to vote against the motion because I, I don't think it's time to end the pause. We, we said to, to March 20th and we'll figure out the dates after tonight.
We didn't say to March 20th. We originally said to the end of February. So this, we would have been here and then it was extended and it keeps getting extended and there's this kick the can down the road thinking we're going to find a smoking gun and there is none. The facts have not changed. We have researched this, I mean, more than anything else we've probably ever done. And so if we still have questions, it is, it is, it's not the facts fault, right? Those have been out there and available. And so it just, it bothers me that there's this pretense of, oh, let's all figure it out. We should have been, should have been doing this homework and, and we're spending copious amounts of time creating new rules and whatever. Where, where was that time? That, that's a misplaced sense of priority. Like why are we not, why are, why are we not talking to people and getting this information? We're not doing the, it's disingenuous to say, we need more time, we need to understand this because you haven't spent the time that you've been given on this. And so I think it's, it's willful ignorance at this point. My motion stands. You can vote against it. I want to end the pause.
I apologize tremendously, Julie, for boring you to death over this. There are three new council people on here. I want you to find this discussion that Brian is going through with us right now. Find this on a video and tell me where it is so I can look at it and call myself an idiot because I didn't find it on one of the videos from the meeting. So please do that for me. There's a lot of information here that I didn't know about and I'm sure you would part, could easily admit that you're learning some things as well because you're learning that actually there was no activity for 39 months in the middle of this five-year period of time that you're involved.
I've been talking about this for five years.
And also, what, what ended up happening in, what was it? April of 2022? Fauci declared COVID was over. So where were you from April of 2022 to, when was this all of a sudden brought up again?
Keith, I don't know what that has to do with anything.
No, no, I'm talking, what month was it brought up again? June of 2022, 23? So if it was such a priority and you had it all ready to go and packaged and get it closed up as soon as COVID was over, because all of a sudden everything was turning to normal, where were you until June of 2023? For two and a, for no, not two and a half years, over three years, this wasn't discussed? And you guys were at the goal line, ready to put it over and all of a sudden it didn't get done? So yes, there's three of us that are learning information about this. I can duel you on information if you want to do it regarding turf and infill and injuries and all this stuff.
I don't want to duel anyone, no.
Do you want to do that?
I don't, I don't want to duel.
So if you're calling me.
Are you threatening me right now?
No, if you're calling.
What are you doing?
I want to debate you on this because you're, you're claiming that I'm not prepared and I don't know what I'm talking about and I'm wasting everybody's time.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying you asked me, where was this information? I just sent you the link.
Right, thank you very much. That's awesome.
So there you go.
So everything that, that Ryan has just gone over is definitely, everything is going to be there. As far as putting walls up at Sterling Field and the cost of putting walls up at Sterling Field, that's all there.
It's, it's not an option. It's not a practical option.
It's not a practical option. Okay, it's not a practical option. That's your opinion, we're learning about that now.
You're just being really rude and aggressive and I'm not going to engage anymore, so I'm done. You can continue to yell, I'm not, I'm not doing this.
If Jamie is saying that she doesn't feel that Nardone is a trustworthy guy, she's not comfortable with him, that's her opinion. I'm sorry that it's not your opinion, that's Jamie's opinion. She's able to, to, to speak of her own opinion here, right? Does she have that ability? Does she have that right to talk her, her, her feelings towards somebody? Or she should just keep her mouth shut, go hide behind the flag there, there, Jamie? And because Julie wants this over with? Is that what this is all about?
I, I would suggest we have the vote and get at least this vote over with. And, and a motion's been seconded, we can have a vote. I've already said what I, I want to say about not ending the pause tonight.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Cunningham?
No.
Councilwoman Goddard?
No.
Councilman Henderson?
No.
Councilwoman Jensen?
No.
Councilman Nathan's absent. Councilwoman Souza?
Yes, please.
Mayor Cohen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, can we ask some other questions, if there are any other questions? I just had some, I just want to go through.
Do you want to speak, Rick?
If you don't mind, and I know this is not a night for public debate.
Oh, sure, yeah, come on, yeah, come on.
But you're, you're not the public.
I'm sorry?
You're not the public.
You're not the public.
I'd like to think so. For those of you who I have not met, my name is Rick McCabe, I'm the Chair of the Recreation Commission. I thought it was important, on behalf of all the volunteers who spend their time and energy and passion on the commission, just to simply clarify a few things and dispel a few notions, there is not one moment in the last four years when this was not a top priority for this commission. It's been a top priority for this commission for, as Ryan said, since 1985. It was a topic in every commission meeting, whether that was on Zoom during COVID, or as we resume back normal meetings in the last 18 months, or whatever it's been. So I think it's important that everyone knows that this has been a, field space in general, this project in particular has been a top priority for everyone on this commission, including members past and present. Our recommendation has been unanimous, in terms of location, and surface, and all the things that we've talked about tonight. I would, I would venture to guess that 95% of what is in Ryan's presentation tonight has been public material and public knowledge for quite a long time, probably going back to pre-COVID, to those times when we were here, that last weekend before we went into lockdown. And the last thing I would simply say is, given the priority of public play space in this community, there has not been one inkling, at any point, that there's public funding available for new space, or rehabilitated, rehabilitated space, just regular upkeep, right? Not, not new space, not anything like that. This is all only happening because there's a unique opportunity from a citizens group that's willing to help us try and make this happen. And we've said from the beginning, this process will go through all the normal channels, all the normal transparency, the rec will continue to control the field space, there'll be no, sort of, you know, most favored nation in terms of any of the user groups, but you should know that this is, that this is a unique once, once in a generation, maybe? Because the last time we did this was when Osborne Home was able to do Sterling. So, it's an important moment for us to consider this seriously. We completely agree about things like Prop 65 and, and all of those, and all those issues, and it's been central to our mission in making sure that that's been part of this process. So we're, we're available for any of our public meetings, to be here for any of your meetings, to answer any additional questions, inquiries, and things like that.
Thank you for bringing the tone back down, I really appreciate it. I know how, I can't say it enough, and I've said it in private conversations, I said it when I was knocking on doors and people were mad at me, I'm in this for playability, I'm trying to figure this out. But we need to think about the future, we need to understand as public officials how to graciously and thoughtfully and responsibly receive a private set of donor dollars. And so, for me to just ask about those three bullets did not feel like it was such a horrible thing to ask.
I don't, and I don't think it was, and I would say if you asked every member of the commission, they would agree. Because that's our, as are yours, our children are going to be playing on these fields, so it's, it's a really important part of that process.
So that's my piece that I'm sitting with, and I need to feel comfortable with it. So, thank you so much for bringing the tone down, and, and adding some, you know.
And again, we're, as I said, our.
For us, because we're all about maximizing place, but we heard from Erin, Erin's not sleeping yet, we joked with her, this is tough, right? This is really tough. What I think we're trying to figure out is, are there ways we can reuse existing spaces? Do we need to do more than just nursery? I mean, I've had conversations with people, like, oh, we're just getting started, well, I need to have that in the conversation, because I have to think about budget responsibilities, the, the staff's capital improvement plan. We need to be able to have the full conversation to see, where is all of this going on, and not just have it, and I really like this funders group, just not have this one funders group drive the bigger picture conversation. And I want to make sure we do that, and I want to be respectful to that process. And I understand the frustration of the pause, I really do.
Understood. And you'll not, you won't find a more passionate group of six or seven or eight of us, however many there are, on the commission, to see this project through to fruition, and then what's next? And what else can we do? Whether that's through eventually public funds that are available, or different user groups, or things like that. So, just know that, as a commission, we've been committed to the transparency, the depth of the research, all of those things that we've talked about tonight. And certainly, we appreciate questions about things that you raised tonight.
And I also think you'll have a hell of a lot more support, if we really, honestly, and transparently, talk about some of those things that are, what are breaking everybody up in communities across the country, if we have that tough conversation. Because it's still there. And I know people feel the momentum, and they don't want to lose the momentum, and I get it, kids are growing up, this is happening tomorrow, we had seven weekends last fall, where there was rainouts. I've been listening to people, I've been talking to people, this is no joke for me, I'm not pausing for the sake of pausing. But we need to be responsible from the dais, with public dollars and private dollars in how we do this. And I think, and I think Greg would probably be willing, I think we probably should make sure we have, keep talking about this Prop 95, I just think it needs to be in our heads. So, thank you.
We agree.
I want to thank you as well, and Matt put a call in to me, outreach going back, I don't know, when was it, in like September or something like that? And then we had another call, then we went to, went out for a couple of beers, and, and the thing is, I.
Can you invite me next time?
I think you'd break the budget, so. You're a bigger guy, put me out of the table or something, I don't know, but anyway, so. But, my kids graduated in 2020, 2022, they're three sports, three sport athletes at Ry High School. We moved here 13 years ago, they went through, they played every single sport that there was. I was driving them all over the place, at higher levels, not Rangers hockey, express hockey, playing for express and lacrosse, and whatever the one was, in Darien that my daughter was playing on before, both kids are playing high school or college lacrosse now. I thought when we moved here, it was absolutely absurd, the conditions, the fields that were here. It was horrible. I, that is absolutely absurd, that Ry High School lacrosse is two or three weeks behind every other high school in Westchester for the most part, because their fields are continuously not usable. It's just absolutely ridiculous from the high school level, and that's burn and Board of Education, but from the fields that are available, and, and I can't imagine what Matt's going through with the growth in, since, what, 2015 to now, is just ridiculous. That's why I'm asking questions, why can't we, we make use of some field space at Founders for him, for his younger guys? He needs fields. And I mentioned to him, we need more fields, we need better fields, and if it needs to be turf, we need more turf fields, we just need more fields. I wasn't a mayor in 2000, whatever it was, 60 years ago, I wasn't in the city council 60 years ago. If I was, I would have been pressing then to fix this problem, because it's embarrassing, I think it's disgusting, that this town, such an affluent town, can't have better sports for their kids, and sports fields for their kids, it's ridiculous. It's embarrassing.
We agree. It's a matter, it's a matter of finding a solution.
Absolutely ridiculous. So, so, so I apologize for waiting a couple of months, or whatever, delaying out this extended period of time, because I really want to find out exactly what we can do. As far as, you know, we need to do something at nursery, we need to do something at Sterling, those fields are ridiculous. Going out to Sterling Field, I remember my son is playing soccer out there, there was divots in these pits in the field, and kids were stepping into a hole and twisting ankles, it's ridiculous. We need to fix all the fields, we just need to do it. And if Matt and his group want to help us out doing it, then that's great, we need to work with Matt's group. Their, their group is, is a mirror of the group that was in Mamaroneck and Lartsmont.
Sure.
They've been working, when did they start? Again, I'm putting you on the point, I'm sorry for asking a question. But they, yeah, they, they did their first project, I don't know, say at least seven or eight years ago, it's been a long time. They did have a little bit of an issue one time with the high school football field, that somebody dropped a lot of money, and all of a sudden, put a couple of calls into the coach, and wanted this kid playing, and this kid didn't deserve to be on the team. But, but that's, you know, aside of this, but the thing is, for the most part, it works out, it's going to work out with them. I'm not, I'm not concerned at all about them getting their money, it's, it's going to all happen. But it's a matter of, it's a matter of really getting comfortable with what's out there, what we have to work with. And they did a plan, I don't know, I'd better look it up, because I don't want to be called out on it, it was, whatever the, the field plan was, what was the date on that? I don't know, I'll look it up. The Recreation Master Plan in 2000, so it's stepped on what the priorities are. There should be some priorities, we should be, you guys probably have a recreational master plan at this point, with where you like to put projects. One interesting thing that we, I guess you guys have been talking about, someone's putting out, putting together Field House, somewhere, we could put a Field House potentially in Ry Rec, where you could have some indoor space to work with. There's a lot of options that are out there, if you have the money, there's a lot of ways to spend it.
If I may, two things. What Christian presented before, as you can see, so many of these projects have sort of fallen off the Capitol, which, which makes complete sense, given the priorities in town. We're not, we're not, we're not immune to that, we get that part. But this, this was the unique opportunity. To your point, we'd vote for all the fields to get rehabilitated, and we would do Sterling, and we would do everything else. This felt like a reasonable first step, with a user group that was willing to sort of help us with the funding piece, and then go through all of the due diligence and transparency that it should take.
And there are, and there's the other side to this, that there's people that are totally against turf fields, synthetic, artificial turf, and you can just go on the internet and do searches out there and find out, there's legislation up in Albany right now. It's actually just for the, the synthetic and the artificial turf with just the rubber infill, it specified just the rubber, there's potentially going to be moratorium on that by the end of the year. So, there's, there's bills in Connecticut, of course, California, there are nut jobs out there, they have bills for everything, to put caps on everything. But the, the thing is, there's, there is a lot of opposition, the opposition's building. Personally, in my house, I get kids playing sports, I've had two hip labrum's, and an ACL meniscus, and then a tear of a kneecap tendon. So I've had a lot of surgeries in the last three years. So, yeah, turf probably didn't help out, crazy coaches at the, the college didn't help out either, but the thing is, there are higher amount of injuries, that's why when we're walking out of an NFL locker room, there's a sign, do you have the right cleats on? A lot of kids in Ry do have multiple pair of cleats for different, if they're playing outside, or if they're playing on, on grass, if they're playing on turf. The lacrosse cleats now, if you look at them, I think it's the Under Armour one that my son was using when he blew out his knee, that they have, it's more like a wing, that's, it's not a round cleat on the bottom, it's a kind of a, a wing, like a wing that's on the bottom, especially around the border. You look at soccer cleats, it's all round cleats, there's less rotational resistance on round cleats, versus even a diamond-shaped cleat. There's very little studies on this, because you have Nike and Under Armour and these other companies that are.
And if this, if this, again, if the project was finalized, we would probably work with the user groups to ask them to educate the players correctly.
Right, but the thing is, Bill's point on this, and a big question that Bill has had over the last months to get worked out, which Ryan did go over, is what happens if all of a sudden, you know, as far as the, the micro, microbiotic, plastic, all of a sudden, if that starts creating a problem for, for our youth, or if all of a sudden, some other issue comes up regarding synthetic turf, and if we need to go and make the change from the synthetic, artificial turf, back to a grass field again, what's the expense of that? It's really not that much overall, because we do have the foundation there, so it's, and we can make use of that. It's not as though we have to start from, from scratch to put the, the grass back down again.
Yeah, Keith, on that point, one of the things I would like, maybe coming out of this, is, in, in sort of general numbers, the breakdown of the cost, construction cost, how much is the drainage, how much is the turf? Because, like, like we said before, and we, we got numbers, eight or nine years from now, when the turf is no longer, when it has to be replaced, we can make a decision then, if we want to go back to grass or re-turf it again. So, that's one of the questions I had. The other, the other was, we, we've looked at a lot of different size fields, and it's not really clear to me how important field size is, and, and, you know, do all the different scenarios of fitting fields in different places, do they work? And do they work for everybody, or do they just work for some, and all that? I, I, I don't know the answer to that, I mean, the fields are, it's like 180 versus 204, I, I don't really, I don't, I don't, I don't play soccer, or my kids don't either, or lacrosse, so I don't really understand that, it'd be good to have a better understanding of whether or not a smaller, the smaller size, you know, the implications of that. So, so if we could somehow figure that one out, that would be good. Good information.
We can ask the user groups for, for their opinion on it, I do think, the, the point that's been made to us is that that's the one location that would give us that full regulation field.
Right.
And I understand the difference between 24 feet is, how much could that be a deal? But I think the thought is, that gives you the, the optimal playing experience for both soccer and lacrosse.
Right, because if, if it's, if it can only be given at one place, then that at least takes an issue off whether or not, and, and how important that is. So, so that, those are two questions I had.
Sure.
The other thing is, just what we learned, is maybe you don't want to do the, today we don't, don't want to do the, the, the larger, full-size field at Sterling, however, we could put a turf on top of that, a synthetic turf on top of Sterling, and Matt can definitely make use of that smaller surface for these younger guys, his, his kids that are, say, below sixth grade or fifth grade, where they don't need to be running the entire 110 yards up and down a field, because that's going to be the majority of their time, and not get too much, many touches out there, so.
Understood. Our, part of our, our assumption was that the, the mitigation issues for the landfill and things like that would probably be extensive versus nursery, not, not a fact-based, fact-based evaluation, but there's members of the commission that were here when Sterling was built, they were on the commission, so they understand what went into that process. So, something to look into, but certainly.
No, there's no question, and the thing is, if you just park something on the top and don't dig below the surface, then you probably have less probability of finding out what's below the surface, which you probably don't want to know.
Most likely, most likely.
So, anyway, I thank you very much for, you're coming up here.
And again, our, obviously, our meetings, anyone's welcome to join us, and, and we're here for anyone as a resource.
When are your meetings?
We meet once a month, our next meeting is next Thursday, next Thursday at, I believe, 6:30, I think, we usually meet at 6:30, usually the second Thursday at.
The same night as the golf commission? Is it the 14th?
We can, we can always find time.
Okay.
So, is there any more on this topic?
Not for me.
Thank you, Greg, and Ryan, and Christian, and Erin, I know it was a long night for you, really appreciate it.